All right, I'm going to call the order of the November 10th regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting called the Public for the Purpose of Conducting the School District's Business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment during the agenda in, as indicated in item number nine. If you would like to speak at public comment, please make sure to fill out one of the comment cards right outside the door where you came in. Those will be picked up right after the superintendent's report. All right, now would you all please stand and join the Girl Scout Troop 8879 as they lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, girls. You did a wonderful job. Tell you've been practicing. All right, so I have a pin for each of you. I'm going to give it to you and if you could say your name really loud so everybody can hear you.
Victoria.
Victoria, thank you.
Abigail.
Abigail, thank you.
Ava.
Ava, thank you very much.
Olivia.
Olivia, thank you.
Lucy.
Lucy, thank you.
Avery.
Avery.
Stephanie.
Lisa.
Grace.
Good job, Felice.
Thank you.
Good job, Olivia.
Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. All right, great job, girls. Thank you so much. First off tonight, we have our instructional highlight from Collins Elementary and we have here the principal, Mr. Mitch Bowlin. Bow- Bowlin. I knew I was going to screw that up.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Kirby, fellow administrators, staff members, families, students. I'm excited to be here tonight. My name is Mitch Bowlin. I am the principal, the proud principal of Collins. Can't believe I'm going on year sixteen, so just still a fantastic place to be and all of those great things. Tonight, we had a chance to talk about student success. So I have the privilege to introduce Rachel Flutter, who is one of our second grade teachers, also an instructional leadership team member, also a student success district rep. She's going to take us through some of the wonderful activities and learning that we've done this year around Belonging. So I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Flutter. Thank you again. We look forward to just highlighting the wonderful things we're doing at Collins.
Thank you. Okay, so for one, I thought this was at our building until like an hour ago. And it's really weird not to be fixing this thing, so I'm going to adjust. So I have been involved in the student success team, formerly owned by many other things in the past for almost my entire career here, almost twenty years. And it's been really fun to see how it has evolved and changed over the years. I'm happy to say that this year, we as a committee have been getting more involved at the building level, which has been really fun to see, getting into classrooms and talking about these eleven powerful words, which are grounded in the principles of Forest Hills, where students can be seen included and valued. Every month, we're trying to do a focus with one of these words and do activities or have discussions or do some different things from K all the way up to twelfth grade. And so that's been pretty fun. It's hard sometimes to decide on exactly what that looks like when you have that wide range, but we've managed to do it for a couple of months and hopefully we'll continue. Our first word, which is super appropriate for the beginning of school, welcomed. We did some work with names, so getting everyone's name in the whole school into one place to see and read and be curious about. At our level, I think all the way up through maybe middle school, we did puzzle pieces with everyone's name on that puzzle piece. And the purpose was to see our school's family names, families' names in one place. How we're all unique like a puzzle piece, but we all fit together as a community of learners. It ended up looking like this in the elementary schools. K would do maybe her favorite colors. I was a kindergarten teacher in August. That's the most you could possibly do at that time. And then second grade, we did names plus maybe a couple of pictures of things you liked or things that represented you. And then as the grades levels went up, it got more complex. The high schools, they did hear some, I believe graffiti boards with their names. And so this was just something as a whole district that went from K all the way, all the way up to the high school level. It's pretty cool. In my, in our building, it caused quite a stir. The day that the kids came in and everything was up, there were crowds around it, kids were excited, they wanted to find their name, they wanted to find their friends' names. And then sort of a fun just happening is I requested help from PTO to cut and hang them because it would have been long nights for me. And we always have our amazing PTO steps up. And Kalasia showed up one day and the two of us, I would not have known her had she not said, oh, I saw this opening to come and do this work. And so even within the parent community, it sort of created this sense of belonging and we had a great conversation. She did go to Calvin and I went to Hope, so there was some issues there at the beginning, but we managed to figure it out. For this month, or no, this was October, then we moved into known as our word. The activity was to read a lot of the book, I Am More Than by LeBron James, which was welcomed by many sports fans in our classrooms. We had discussion around what's, what's past the name and what's past the outside appearance? Who are you really? And then we also had, Collins teachers just ran with this and we had writing projects that came out of it and art projects that came out of it. And I'll show you those in a little bit. But the purpose was to learn something that you might not have known and make connections or ask questions of our school community. Kindergarten did self-portraits and they added one word. And then on the left or on the right, you know, those are upper level grades that did a little bit more with their self-portraits and talked more about who they were. Second grade, we did, and I was so hoping you were coming to our school because these are all long, but maybe if you have a chance, walk through, but they're really, really cute. Projects that had I am, I like, I love. And it just turned out so, so amazingly. And then this little to and from section, that is what we printed out in second grade and had kids respond to their like numbers. So if you're number one in Ms. DeBoer's class, you've complimented or asked questions of the number one in her class and sort of responded to each others and read each others. And then writing their stories in third grade, they came up with these writing prompts where they used and then shared with each other. So everyone just kind of took it in their own direction. It's really fun to see. And then last Friday, we had our district-wide Belonging Bash for third grade. Every single third grader in the district came together right next door in the auditorium and the Shared Voices Committee, which is also so awesome to see all those high schoolers from all the different high schools come together. They put it on. They were so good. And everyone kind of talked about, how can we, how can we pull everyone in? How can we, how can we include everyone? And did skits and dancing and there was a lot that was very loud at times, but it was super fun. So here are a few pictures of some kids at that event. Some faces you might recognize from over here. Shared Voices Committee on the, on the top and kids, I think I tried to get a picture of everyone was jumping at the same time, having so much fun. So enough of me talking, we have some third graders to come up and say a little piece. Can I bend this down? Does that work?
You can lower it too, Miss Flutter.
Oh, yeah. I think it may. Is that better? So this is Leila and her, her prompt was, what was your favorite part of the Belonging experience at the FAC and why?
My favorite was the video because it teaches people about kindness. At Collins, the third graders lost a piece of privilege, but we got it back because we worked together.
So that was at recess that you lost a piece, a privilege to be on that equipment, but you worked together to figure it out? Love that, all right. Next, we have Cory, I believe. You're next. Oh, and Cory's prompt was, what is one thing you learned about meeting everyone who feels like they belong at Collins?
I tell people compliments because it makes them feel good. Also, a new kid came this year. He needed help with things, so I helped him. It made him feel good and me too.
And only young eyes could have seen that. Evie Comerow. Her prompt was, how can you help someone feel more welcome or included inside the classroom?
Help them when they struggle. When a new student came from a country and made sure she was comfortable by smiling and playing with her.
And Grace. So many Graces to me. Why is it important that everyone feels like they belong at Collins School?
It's important that everyone feels like they belong at school because they can do better in school when you're kind to them. And when you're kind to others, they can spread that little kindness like confetti and make others feel good.
So cute, so good. Okay. So as teachers, we see this work, building relationships, we see how it connects to PDIS and some of our other initiatives. We're just going to keep rolling with it and we're just enjoying stuff I say as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you to all of the students who came in. You did such a great job. What I am going to do now is I'm going to take a quick little break here so that all of the students and their families can have a chance to get home and maybe have dinner and. We will move into business portion here now. Ms. Rubik, can I have a motion to approve, Ms. Rubik, item four A1 through four C1?
The move that we approve from Ms. Rubik for A1 through four C1.
One second.
Okay, and we can basically move on to our curriculum board. Mrs. Rubik?
Yeah, good evening. This month, we heard from our talented and gifted program. And we talked about this a little bit last year at one of our meetings as well. So just a reminder, we have currently in our district, a hundred and sixty-three students identified as talented and gifted in our first through sixth grades. And those students are in what we call a cluster classroom in their respective elementary schools. So those are the teachers that are assigned to those students to offer them different enrichment opportunities, different extension opportunities with the content that is already being instructed. But really what the gifted program wanted to talk about this month with us was the fact that they put on their own talented and gifted conference this fall for the teachers in the district who work with our talented and gifted students. And so they created an entire conference that they had over at the FAC and they made different breakout sessions that teachers could select from in terms of what they were most interested in when it came to educating our talented and gifted students. Just like a regular conference that we would attend somewhere offsite. And they had a keynote speaker, actually one of our Forest Hills parents, who regularly does keynote addresses and discusses project-based learning with not just Forest Hills, but beyond Forest Hills. In fact, he is currently in talks with the College Board to work on some different project-based learning initiatives with AP. So that was really fantastic. There was widespread support and excitement for this conference. All the teachers really appreciated it. They thought it was great to have it on site and also to be taught by their peers and their fellow teachers. So that was a real success for our talented and gifted team was this conference that they put on for our educators. We also talked briefly about the fact that we are going to be partnering with Kids Hope to provide mentoring to different students within the district. All of the elementary schools have expressed interest in having a mentor. So it's up to the different administrators to decide which students in their school could benefit from that and work out a schedule. We are also still partnering with Hands to Hand at a few of our elementary schools. We have forty-one kids who qualify for those services. And then like we just heard, this past Friday, we had the third grade Belonging Event over at the FAC, which I know was very successful, much like the fourth grade one that we had last late winter, early spring. So all really good things. And that was, that was me.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, I should, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I also, we are going to vote to approve tonight the principles of macroeconomics for use in AP Macro at Eastern High School.
Okay, then I'll head over to Dr. Rashad for a finance report.
Sure, we had a full agenda at our meeting as well, the culmination of a lot of months and months of work coming to us tonight in a couple of different areas. But we started a review of our financial statements through September, which has us already a quarter of the way through our fiscal year, all of which was without a state budget, so that was fun as we all know. And then we, as we do, have a good overview of our bond construction updates and the work happening across the district. A lot of active sites, Northern Hills Middle School and the Aquatics Center have recently had bidding closed and we'll talk about that more in a second. That's here for our approval tonight. There's work to be coming up at all exteriors and the high school athletic facilities for upgrades around all the athletic facilities there. Ada Elementary and Meadowbrook are about done planning and will be going out to bid soon for us to consider probably shortly after the new year. And again, a number of places in the design phase. Main update on that regard in the future being the current Aquatics Center. We'll talk about the new Aquatics Center. That work will start this late spring, summer probably ahead is to try to figure out what we want that space to look like and how we could redesign that space to be useful to our learners and to our community. So that's coming up as well. For action items, we have sets of contracts for two big construction projects. The first is Northern Hills Middle School was out to bid. There was twenty-five different categories that received a total of eighty-three bids, so we're happy about that. Help drive costs down. The low bids were accepted in all of the categories except for three. One had an incomplete response. One did not follow the design as specified. And one, we opted for a voluntary alternate to better suit our needs after everything was flushed out. But beyond that, it was, it was low bid in all categories. We had all the information in our packets, talked about those at some committees as well, a lot of it. I don't want to talk about it for thirty seconds only to minimize it, but a lot has gone into this. We've talked about this extensively. OAK reviewed everything as well as we saw and agrees with the recommendations. So this is to us for a total cost not to exceed sixteen million, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. That'll come from twenty-three and twenty-five capital projects with work to start in June and estimated about a two-year construction project over at Northern Hills Middle. The second piece is to approve the contracts for our new Aquatics Center. Thirty-one bid categories in this project that received a total of one hundred and forty-one bids. And, and we mentioned it a couple of times, kind of a point of pride. Groups from across the state wanted to be associated with this project. Places as far as Saginaw and Holland, Grand Haven. A lot of folks, I think, view this as a marquee project and a very cool piece of the West Michigan area. So again, it was, there was a lot of bids which helped with pricing. As we saw in the packet, recommendation is for all low bidders except for four. Two with an incomplete scope who ended up retracting their bids and two that didn't meet the project specifications otherwise, and it was next low bidders in those categories. Again, everything reviewed and supported by our OAK partners. So the total cost of the project under initial projected budget, forty-seven million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars from the 2025 Capital Projects Fund. A little bit of work to start yet this fall with some water and pipe relocation. And then the rest of the project to start sort of after winter is, is gone into the spring. Again, about a two, two and a half year project expected for the new Aquatics Center. Beyond those, we have in front of us the approval of the purchase of five new school buses from Midwest Transit Equipment. They're the international brand, which our whole fleet is standardized too now. We know we have buses on replacement cycles. So these, this is a standard item for us about this time of year. Usually they phase out around a hundred and twenty thousand miles is when we look to replace them. The cost for the five is not to exceed eight, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and five thousand dollars from 2025 Capital Projects. Noted, this is up about eleven thousand dollars per bus last year. About sixty percent of that, they tell us, is attributed to the effects of the tariffs from, from the recent workings. So more per bus, that's the total cost for five new ones. Next item is the, our next purchase of interactive flat panels, or these VenQ boards that are around the district now. We've approved previously two phases or two purchases of groups of these. This next purchase is for a hundred and thirteen more units to roll out to Central High School and Eastern Middle High School. And the training and support, again, come with all of these like they have before, amount not to exceed six hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars of 2023 Capital Projects. The next is my favorite item of the month, an automated floor scrubber for Eastern Middle School, High School. It's the custodial equipment that is classically driven and scrubs all of the tile and the hard surfaces. This is the Roomba edition of that as we were described. It's, it's programmable. It's, it operates by itself. It can be deployed through an app to go and clean up spills. It's a pretty cool piece of equipment. It has a great lifecycle to it, has a lot of advantages in terms of being able to use our human workforce more efficiently and in different areas as well. So it comes with the warranty, all the software, multiple quotes, the low bidder was Action Chemical Incorporated for that one. And the next is an annual item, our summer tax levy, which we do every year or have every year since nineteen eighty-six, before us to authorize the collection of fifty percent of our district taxes in July instead of collecting all of them at one time. We split that into two collections across the year. Has multiple advantages and applies to most of the municipalities that are part of Forest Hills and make up Forest Hills, except the City of Grand Rapids and Cannon Township, those small pieces of a hundred percent collection. And finally, just a refund in property tax on one item, sixty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents to Kent County. And that was all of it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Rashad? All right, then can we please have a roll call vote on our consent voting?
Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosman?
Yes.
Ms. Naimarya.
All right. Up next, we have a board policy. Can I have a motion to approve board policies three one one eight and four one one three as presented?
Motion.
A second. Okay, these are just a couple of updates to these, the FBI updated their definition of sexual assault. And so we're just updating our definition and our policies to be consistent with that. And we are updating the number of a form on the sick time policy. That's all those are. So can I, can we do a roll call vote on board policy?
Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosman?
Yes.
Ms. Naimarya.
Up next, can I have a motion to approve Superintendent Kirby's attendance and his related travel expenses for the AASA National Conference in 2026?
Motion. I'll second.
All right, so this is just a national superintendent's conference that will be held, I think, in Tennessee. Tennessee this year keeps him up to date and start with everything that's going on with the superintendents and all of that goes into his job, which I'm glad I do now have. Can we do just, oh, since there will be related expenses with this, so we will do a roll call vote.
Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosman?
Yes.
Ms. Naimarya.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. There are quite a few things to share and celebrate. We did just want to start out, today we learned that our communications department, Elizabeth and Isabella, as we all know, do a fantastic job and we recognize their work, but they also won some state level awards, five of them as a matter of fact. And so they, they received an excellence award in marketing materials around our operating village renewal, the newsletter they put together as well as the marketing campaign for that altogether. And then also won a merit award, special purpose category for junior kindergarten and the information booklet that they put together for the launch of our new program. And then a video, won an award for a video they did around the Hart Lane, which was a student who did a wonderful presentation at our safety and security event back in January, over about a year ago. So, and then the other was a, another video that they did around the junior kindergarten launch. So just wanted to recognize that they work extremely hard and we recognize the great work that they do and so does the members of the state and their association. So congratulations to them. Just wanted to make sure to share that this evening. And also I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our robotics team is looking for space. And, you know, we've been trying to deal with it for quite some time, but we used to have a community partner that allowed them to practice and store the materials and we're in that space again where we need a community partner that would be fantastic. Need a high roof and some space for them to have the materials. So if there's anybody out there so inclined, we certainly would welcome conversation to try to support our students in robotics. Just wanted to say thanks to everybody for supporting the enhancement village for the county ISD. It makes a large impact for all of the local schools in the past with quite a bit of support, so we're very thankful for that. quite a bit of support, so we're very thankful for that. 3188 is the safety and the mental health money that was put into the budget, and there's some stipulation in it this year. There was quite a bit of change. It is, it's a large sum of money. For us, it would be $1.2 million if every school district that was eligible applied for it. It's per pupil, is how you would figure that out. But there's a per pupil amount, and then there's two competitive grants. The two competitive grants are about $53 million a piece, and then the per pupil is well over $200 million. So it's pretty significant money, but in the years past, they've just given them the money to the school districts to utilize and gave us flexibility as long as we were supporting those two pieces, mental health or safety and security. This year, there was language put in that has caused some concerns, partly because it's not clearly defined, and that is a big issue. Typically, we don't have to accept these types of dollars or any of our categorical funds, but this year with that language, if there is a mass casualty event, which is poorly defined and is very wide open, it could be anywhere from a bus accident with multiple injuries, say three injuries, that would be considered a mass casualty event. Could be a chemical spill and multiple kids getting sick, the way the definition is currently written. So that's something that our associations and school board associations and a number of associations are asking for clarity around what that means. And then also, the governor would be appointing an investigator, and that investigator would be completely up to the governor. So it doesn't have any criteria around what type of agency or individual would be doing this type of an investigation, and that causes the school district to waive any privileges that they might have. And, you know, one obvious privilege is the attorney-client privilege if there was ever an investigation and we were working through that investigation. And that obviously causes some concerns just as far as being able to have frank conversations, and also, you know, the whole investigation as to whether or not people are going to share information and so on. But that anxiety level obviously could definitely be different if you didn't have the ability to have those types of conversations with your attorney, which everybody in society is allowed to have that conversation currently. So that does cause us a lot of concerns. They changed the deadline a few different times. It started out as the 12th of November, then it was moved to the 16th, now it's the 30th. And there is some work around trying to get some clarity around some of that language, like I said, the mass casualty event. It's not really the spirit of what they're intending. This all comes from the, you know, terrible tragedy in Axber is where a lot of this is coming from, and that's what the intent was. But that's not what the language is, and that's what happens when you push a budget bill through with three hours for people to read the language, it does not get read. So there is some discussion around changing the language. If it's going to happen, it's going to happen this week. There's no guarantee that the governor would sign any language changes because it was really her executive budget that initially had this language written in there. So what I'm proposing is to sometime before this month's end, having a special meeting to consider whether or not to accept those funds and do it with all the information. I didn't want to bring it here this evening, knowing that there's potential that some of those definitions could change, and so I just wanted to give you an update on that. That's where things stand. So I would guess that by the end of the week, we'll have a pretty good sense as to, you know, where it will be. That was, I sent out some dates, some potential dates for a special board meeting, but hoping to have some clarity by the end of the week, so you all can make a decision based on, you know, accurate information. Any questions on that at all?
That would be max $1.2 million if everyone were to say yes to the law.
Yes, if everybody said yes, correct. So it is written in, say, only three school districts in the state, which is just hypothetical. It's not all divided up. I did, you know, look into that. It isn't going to be more than $10,050 per student because it can't be more than what the per pupil allowance is. That's also written in the law. So that would be the max there, so. And also, I just would recognize that we currently, our mental health liaisons that are in each of the district boundaries under school nurses are the primary funds that we, it's how we primarily fund it now, so.
If we, and maybe this is a question that will be answered when there's more clarification on the language, if we were to turn this down this year and fund those with other money, is there a risk that we lose that money going forward?
So that is, again, some of the clarity that is lacking as to whether or not that moves all the way forward and whether or not those investigative pieces go backwards as well, if they find that something was related. So that's part of the clarity.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, any other questions on that? All right, I'll keep moving along here. I did want to recognize ironically, October was school safety month, and we did quite a bit of work, and obviously Elizabeth and our team, Isabella and the principals worked to communicate to families. They've really been working to get out our vocabulary so that families understand what it is that we're doing when we're saying that this drill happened and those types of things, so families are aware, and we've got a lot of positive feedback on that. Also wanted to mention, red light runners are a real problem all across our state, and what that is, is those that are passing school buses when the red lights are on. We do have cameras on the arm that goes out, and then it is captured as to who that red light runner is, and then there's a whole process for them to get ticketed and so on. Outside of all that, it's very dangerous because it means that there's kids exiting the bus and crossing. So I just want to bring that to people's attention, that when those red lights are on, they start out at yellow up high, and then they end up being red. So that's your signal, they're yellow up high, that it's time to get stopped because they're going to become red, that has become an issue. I just want to make that evident. And I did just want to mention, you did mention hand-to-hand, which is fantastic. For those that don't know, those are weekend meals for those children, so they go home. Forty-one families at this point are going home with weekend meals for their children. I have mentioned in the past that our enrollment was up. Our pupil head count was 9,045. That's the number of pupils that we have, and that's a positive total FTE difference is 133 from last year. So for budget purposes, that is definitely good news. We had a job fair. We had over 30 people in. We built some cafeteria jobs, some parapro jobs, and have had an opportunity to meet some great people in the community, so we're really thankful for that. And you might have noticed that transportation this week, we had no cancellations for the first time, so we're definitely pleased with that. And, you know, as long as the health and everything, you know, continues and employee retention, you know, we're hoping to be able to maintain that as much as possible. We still, we've added 10 drivers since the start of the school year. We've obviously been working very hard around recruitment and retention. And then also, we changed some of our training processes, which has made an impact as well. We have an additional four drivers currently within our training processes now, so two regular bus drivers and two substitutes, and we're always willing to take on one or so. Even if you can't work every single day or both shifts at both ends, we can figure out some way to get you on the team if you're interested in working in transportation. Overall, we'll continue to look at our model. We know our model needs to change. We're still trying to do things that, you know, we did with probably another 15 to 20 drivers, so we'll continue to look at that. We did talk to our parent advisory committee about some of the things that we've been talking about and what appropriate communication timeframes would look like and so on to give them, you know, time to take care of their children and their needs and so on. So we did get that information, so that was very helpful. We got a lot of information around the elective survey, and we're continuing to digest that. Hanover gets all of that information, and then they create summaries, and they'll do a summary report like they did in the emergent program. We do have an inside dashboard that they make available to us, and that gives us some, you know, initial information. Our high school students are definitely looking for more flexibility within their schedule and doing, you know, as much hands-on, career-related activities and courses as possible. So there's definitely some information there for us to understand and potentially act on. So lastly, I just would like to say, tomorrow will be Veterans Day. Thank you to all of our veterans for your service and all the sacrifices that you've made. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Board communications. We have the communications this time.
I can talk about MBSB conference.
Well, I was wondering about that. It was like, we should talk about the MBSB conference to fill in those who weren't able to go.
But everyone's here.
Those that what are here and those that didn't go are not here. So do we want to maybe do that next?
Sure. Great idea.
So you guys might not be able to hear about what it was we did.
Yep.
Okay.
I didn't think of that.
I will say, we also mentioned as part of the topic we were invited to speak, as part of our topic, we referenced our communications department probably at least a dozen times, saying how lucky we were to have these people, and they were so influential in doing the things that we've been able to do, and so that rolled in, so that was timely to receive that praise as well. We certainly agree. Only a quick update from the foundation. Mentioned it last month, but in a couple of days begins the Love Your Local campaign for anybody out and about in Ada, and the foundation kind of created it. Love your local schools to tag with that. Partnership with Ada Business Association. So any donations to the foundation between November 14th through the end of the year, you basically get half of that donation back in a gift card to the Ada Businesses Association, and all of the businesses that partner with them or that work under that umbrella, so it's most of the places around downtown Ada, obviously. So it's a great way to give to the foundation and then also receive something that you can go put into the community as well. So you can be on the lookout for that, and that's on the website and all that. But that was all for now.
All right. Anything else? Okay, then I guess we are up to public comment. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and we'll make your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. For established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with speakers during public comment. Everyone who indicates they would like follow-up from the district will receive it from the appropriate administrator. Okay, first up, we have Vincent Monahar.
Vincent Monahar, GoFundMe at 6860, Cascade Vote. I recommend all minors and easily-triggered adults leave. This is my only trigger warning. I've asked board president Fosman multiple speeches as well not to refer to me by my professional title. Despite her continued disregard for my preferences, my speech reflects only my views and no affiliation that my professional title might suggest. This passed out as your second medical journal article to understand the scope of the problem perpetuated in the FHPS school libraries. This is from the Journal of Communication Research by Elizabeth Perez. It is the use of erotica and acceptance of rape myths. Scientific data that has been present since 1994. This study considered two models with respect to the exposure of erotica defined as sexually explicit materials. The liberal theory stated that erotica had few negative effects. The feminist social responsibility theory contended that the use of erotica contributes to the acceptance of rape myths, defined as prejudice and factually incorrect beliefs about rape victims and rapists, reflecting a climate hostile to the rape victims. The study assessed links not only between rape myth acceptance and the volume of exposure, but the reasons for exposure to erotica as well. And as it turned out, the liberals were wrong on this, and the feminists were spot on. Increase in exposure to erotica was related to increase in rape myth acceptance. Most reasons for erotica use were also associated with an increase in rape myth acceptance. For example, the use of erotica for sexual enhancement defined as information gathering or mood enhancement, as well as diversion defined as escape, entertainment, or boredom, were indirectly related to rape myth acceptance, their link to increased exposure to erotica. It is thought that this is due because much erotica depicts sexist use of women that dehumanize and see these objects. Sexual enhancement and diversion are common causes of erotic use in teens. Sexually explicit books are in the school libraries, where the last four years I have read many of them to you with graphic depictions of rape. Why is FHPS passive and complicit in fueling the rape myth acceptance by leaving these explicit materials on their shelves? Why promote misogyny through exposure to erotica? Yearly Utah steps taken to secure the internet access and usage while on school property? If you do that, why would you use sexually explicit materials in your school libraries? The media specialists, principals, and the assistant superintendent of instruction have four books sanctioned means of moving these books off campus to a public library or a used bookstore, and you can help by encouraging the producer. Good day.
Thank you, Dr. Monahar. Next up, Doug Lee.
Doug Lee, resident of Cascade of Ada, for its 30 years, four alumni from Forest Hills Central. I would like one follow-up comment. Superintendent Kirby mentioned the increase, and I wonder if the increase in student population has anything to do with the four-year-olds that we've allocated to our school. We're in the business of education. I listened to a presentation, and I have also 11 words that I think are pretty strong words. It should be a foundation to education. Mathematics, science, reading, writing, US history, road history, spelling, grammar, music, chemistry, and jack. I remember going to a board education meeting, and two seniors came up and said, we don't need to know about history, it's how we feel about each other. That's what we're graduating. So we put the words of welcome and all the touch and feelings, and we take the focus off education. We get what we get. I've been doing this now for six years. As you know, I'm pretty persistent in this. I've been very actively involved in the governance of our education because I put education first. So recently, I made the decision that because nobody here listens to me, I'm going to take my fight to land in the House District 80 and bring education back to Michigan schools, not just Forest Hills, but a broader scope. It would take more of my time and have much more effectiveness than sitting here and talking to you guys all the time about what's wrong with this school. If you see what I see from the kids that graduate in the real-life world, and see that this is not the college, the school you graduated from, it's different. When you talk to an 11th grader or 12th grader, they don't even know base 10 systems. History is, history, US history is foreign to them. We're no longer in the business of education, and if you don't believe it, you have to talk to enough people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, sorry, next is David Martin.
David Martin, I live on Snow Avenue. Also, thanks to veterans who protect my freedom to speak here tonight, anyone in the audience anywhere. My addresses to the board, I want the audience to also listen carefully and agree because it's regards to Supreme Court's decision in June 2025 in a case titled Mahmoud v. Taylor. I would expect the board to be extremely familiar with this case, but the audience may not be. It is one of the most consequential rulings in the last decade, and it is entirely surrounded around public education. Briefly, a Virginia school district used certain textbooks in classrooms without allowing parents to opt their children out of these classes. As is typical nowadays, the books promoted LGBTQ lifestyles which oppose Islamic teachings. Thus, an Islamic family named Mahmoud sued the school district. Anyone who wants to investigate it, it is spelled M-A-H-M-O-U-D. The school district argued that mandating these books was necessary to promote inclusivity of thought and behavior. The school board simply stated that parents could simply send their students to private school in order to opt out of such teachings. Wow. Notably, one board member called the Islamic family white supremacists. Shows you just how far an elitist will go to protect their power. However, in ruling for the parents, the Supreme Court affirmed that the family's religious rights overrides the rights of the schools. The court wrote, quote, "We reject the chilling version of the power of the state to strip away the critical right of parents to guide the religious development of their children." That end of quote. Schools now must inform and allow parents to pull students from classrooms to avoid content that conflicts with their religious beliefs. So to you parents out there, it is now your firm right to investigate curriculum and pull students out of lessons that conflict with their religious beliefs. This pertains to every single lesson, every single class, every single day of the year. It is also your responsibility to monitor the Michigan Board of Education, which just two months after the Supreme Court decision, is now proposing to circumvent two months after the Supreme Court decision, is now proposing to circumvent current state law to eliminate out-to-out provisions for sex education classes. Now, ask yourself, why would a state board propose a standard that is in direct conflict with established state law and the US Supreme Court? Well, remember how tightly elites claim the power? There's your answer. And do you think they will worry whether they trample on your rights, if they will trample on the US Supreme Court?
Mr. Martin.
Stay vigilant.
All right, up next, Scott Van Zol.
Hello, Scott Van Zol. I live in Cascade. I just want to say I'm a little disappointed with some of the district's recent spending decisions. I mean, I took the time to watch the finance committee meeting that Vincent recorded. Thank you, Vincent. Because for some reason, the district still chooses not to record those meetings. That's unfortunate, since you clearly have the equipment that's not even being manned. But what really stood out to me was how much time was spent discussing a fifty thousand, five hundred and ten dollar automated floor scrubber, far more than was spent talking about the sixteen million-dollar FHN renovation or the forty-eight million-dollar new aquatic center. Even during this meeting, those multimillion-dollar projects were just mostly glossed over. Now, to be fair, the scrubber itself seems like a good investment. Using an AI-powered machine to handle that work makes sense. It saves employee time and eliminates the need for someone to ride the current one for an entire eight-hour shift. My concern isn't the purchase, it's how much attention it received compared to the much larger projects. Granted, there was much larger project, and probably had a whole bunch of other meetings beforehand, but still. I also wanted to ask about the current aquatic center. From what I understand, it's going to be filled in, at least the pool portion. And then next year, a plan will be developed for what to do with that space. And how long will that take? This reminds me of the two thousand fifteen task force report on the old administration building. Back then, the options were to sell the property to offset the cost of this new building, or to tear it down and turn it into sports fields. Since all the high schools already have plenty of fields, I think selling it as is with the building intact still makes the most sense. As far as I know, it's still used for district printing and sometimes police training. Obviously, I see a lot of police vehicles there on occasion, since it's mostly empty, more likely trained. And while we're on that topic, I'd also like to ask about the sixty acres on Buttrick that were purchased around thirty years ago. It doesn't seem needed right now, and hopefully it's not costing the district anything, since FHPS doesn't pay property taxes. I do actually have an idea for that property. To all admit, it probably wouldn't be too popular with the neighbors, but it might make sense for the district in the long run, especially if you get possibly more people into the district. So I just hope these older properties don't get forgotten while attention is focused on the new projects and renovations. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle Lee, pass. Okay. Then at this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with those who requested it. Is there any other business before the board this evening? All right, hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.